Alright, be it resolved. The reorganization proposal as set out in the Chief Administrative's confidential report, number Admin 2017-028, presented in a closed meeting, be approved at a net addition of one position with a net impact on the budget of $37,900 savings. Seconded by? Councilor Sima. All those in favor? Questions? All those in favor then? Carry. Thank you. Well, with regard to announcements, I'd like to introduce you all to our new Ontario Provincial Police detachment commander, Mr. Duval, in French or in English? In French, please. Well, I had a discussion with our mayor last Wednesday at an emergency services meeting, and I'd made everybody know then that I'll be the new chief of police. I hail from Alexandria. I was born and raised, but a majority of my career was in Hogsbury. That's unfortunate for you that you spent most of your career in Hogsbury. Well, and recently, Mr. Mayor, I was selected as a replacement to operate as a detachment commander for the, at the OPP detachment here in Rockland. My main philosophy is to entertain open discussions with you. Now, you know who I am. You can phone me up if you have any questions. I'd just like to mention that if there's another 911 phone call that is placed through your detachment, it's going to be the third time that Mrs. Collier has pressed the wrong button. The other, the worst thing of all is that I was at the arena on the other side of the street. All you could have done is just hail me from this window here. I would have come over right away. Any questions? Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Duval for his nomination. We have a bilingual person, that's a person that's in position right now. Well, I do live in Prescott Russell, Mr. Mayor, and Councilor Lallonde, I love this particular community here. I spent six months, and I was at the Russell detachment. I was operating for a period of six months at the Russell detachment. I liked it very much. If a position opens up there, I'm interested in staying on. So, you'd like to certainly occupy this new detachment that we're going to build for you? Well, that could certainly be introduced in the next round of negotiations as a talking point, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Chief Duval, let's go on now to consent items. I'm sorry? Other announcements? Yes, announcements? Do you wish to allude to events of November the 11th? Well, yes. This coming Saturday at 10:30, there will be a ceremony that will start up at the Knights of Columbus Hall, and at 11 o'clock, there will be a special celebration in front of Town Hall. Everyone is welcome to attend. You know that we are all there to commemorate our worthy veterans, many of whom have given up their lives for our lives to ensure our lifestyle. It's quite important. If ever, wherever we set foot as Canadians, in Europe or elsewhere, we're always well-revered and it's because of their good efforts. Councilor Lallonde? Yes, Santa Claus Parade on the 26th of November? Starting at 6:30, going up to Simoneau from Heritage. Councilor Simoneau? On the 24th of November, on Friday evening, there'll be a special family sharing night. No, but the next day in Saint Pascal de Belo-Belo. I'm sorry, we started off with the Santa Claus Parade. Yes, on the 24th of November at 7:00 PM, at the Artemis Show Hall in Saint Pascal at 9:00 in the morning, on the 25th of November, going to be a special fundraising and cultural activity. Other announcement? The Santa Claus Parade will turn over in Saint Joseph, on Saint Joseph Street and not on Simoneau. Fine. Any other things? No? Fine. Let's go on now to the question period. If anybody has any questions, please step up to the mic, give your name and your address. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Roland Lebonté. I'm here to address members of council concerning the report entitled Info 2017-39 concerning my daughter. The gentleman that carried out the inspection, well, I managed to obtain the French version. Thank you very much, and I went through his report. Well, there's a lot of things hidden in his report. You know, when this guy's seated at his table there, at his table inside his office there, he doesn't see everything. He was supposed to meet me on my, on my property. He never came over. He told me that he'd meet me during the springtime when the snow would have melted away to see the entire problem, but he did not. He released his report during the springtime. When I met with you, Mrs. Sima, I told you what the nature of my problems were, and it's just funny that Mr. Lucel would have met the owner of the property neighboring mine the day prior to his issuing this report. You see, they met our neighbor before they met us. His idea was already made up, his mind was already made up before they released this report. If they want me to lose my time, that's fine, you know, to fool around with those who like to fool around, or those, those people, those good-for-nothings, well, let's not cast aspersions. Look, I'm a good-for-nothing myself, alright, Mr. Mayor. I have no diplomas or anything like that, but I see, I know what a lie is and what truth is all about. He told, he stated in his report that I dug this well by hand. I did not dig this well by hand, and I used a mechanical shovel. He stated that he could not see what the source of contamination to this particular well was. I told Mr. Fillon and Mr. Kikapo, those representatives of the municipality that set foot on my property, that when they dug that ditch the first time around, he just went through. He didn't go through the easement, but just threw, straight through the ditch. Now, there's a space behind that property that shores up about eight feet high. There's a 12-foot wide sparse space there, but they didn't, when they dug there, they didn't follow along the specs set out to properly work in a sandy area, and the work they carried out caused this disruption of underground, of the underground water table. And when the water went up on my neighbor's, my neighbor's property, well, the cause was directly attributable to that. You know, when heavy trucks go by, travel on the surface, on the surface of the, of the property there, it certainly disturbs the underground water table and the level of the underground water table. Mr. Lanard, could you check over with Mr. Lucel and come back at the next meeting to let us know what this is all about, what the situation is all about? Where were, where were we stand? Well, you see, this individual, Mr. Mayor, never set foot on my property. Well, Mr. Lanard will verify with Mr. Lucel what's what, and will come back, he'll come back to us on that. Well, Mr. Lucel, the only thing he told me on my property on that day and the day prior that he set foot there, and I also attended with you, but the only thing that he told me the day previous to everything that happened here was that this was my problem. I just asked questions. You remember that I phoned you and I told you that he was sending engineers over on the property? Why did he do so? The city's plans are already drafted. He has all of the slope and degree angles of the slopes, but he was sending over other engineers to drop additional plans. I told Mr. Lucel that I did not want any engineers setting foot on my, on my property. If he's too lazy to do that, then I can do it for him. Sir, he'll come up with a report. Mr. Lanard will go, will, will discuss this with Mr. Lucel, and he'll come back with a report next, next week. Mr. Lanard is newly arrived here with the municipality? Well, I'm just trying to come up with an answer for your dilemma. That's the best I can do tonight. Well, I don't want answer. I don't want action. I can tell you what the answer to this dilemma is all about. If they want to commission studies, well, if they want to conduct studies, let them go back to school. I'll show them what to do. In two weeks, Mr. Lanard, you'll have another answer. Yes, I have another question. What are the setbacks with regards to the zoning by law? 60, 100, or 120 meters? Well, that's a good question. Setback measurements. Hmm. You see, if you send documents and you want, you wish zoning modification, you need to post your intention. Well, when you send letters to your neighbors, what is the distance that you have to specify with regard to a setback? I believe it's 120 meters after consulting with our officials. Well, how come my daughter did not receive this, this benefit when she wound up in the same situation for Roland? Well, I asked that question. Well, it's 60 meters. Well, so current specifications is 60 meters? However, when I enter into discussions with neighboring municipalities, they state 120 meters as a setback. No. For a minor variance, sir, minor variance involves a 60-meter setback. For other matters, it's 120 meters. That's why your daughter did not obtain this privilege, because it was dealing with minor various. Well, I just like an answer, Mr. Mayor, to my dilemma. In two weeks, Mr. Lanard is going to take care of this. Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? None? Well, that's fine then. Let's go on. Members' reports? None. Let's go on now to consent items. I'd like to withdraw 10.3 sub B, Mr. Mayor, if I may, from the list of consent items. 10.3 sub B. Anything else? 10.3 sub B. Well, that's fine. We'll remove that. Mr. Lavert, would you care to read all other items? I just love being designated as the official reader, Mr. Mayor. However, it has not popped up on my screen. Well, go ahead, Councilor Sima. Be it resolved that the following consent items that appear on the regular meeting of the 6th of November be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Sub A, regular meeting of October the 16th, 2017, and sub B, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of October the 16th, 2017. Item 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Public Library Board Meeting of September the 19th, 2017, and Committee of Adjustment Meeting of September 20th, 2017. 10.3, the following recommendations from Committee of the Whole of October the 16th, 2017. A, resolution to reiterate council's position to take legal action to recover the additional expenditures funded by the municipality to affect their remediation works to the stormwater management pond for Verdun subdivision, and C, resolution to endorse the revised scope of work and budget for their Victoria Street upgrading works, and to approve the appointment of the United Counties of Prescott Russell to undertake the required asphalt works, and D, resolution to approve the scope of works, the implementation schedule, and budget for water main looping projects on Landry and Russell Roads, and item 10.4, tax reduction under section 357 and 358 of the municipal act. I'd like to second this, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor then? Carry. Thank you. Councilor Bellenguet, would you care to read resolution 10.3 sub B? Whereas members of council have had the opportunity to revise the final draft for phase one of the 10-year capital works program contained in INF 2017, and whereas certain staff members have met with town council to revise this program, be it resolved that council approves the final implementation of the draft plan for phase one of the 10-year public capital works program, subject to final budget approval. Seconded by Councilor Lallonde. Questions? Councilor Bellenguet?
I know that we'd stated that it would be subject to budget approval. I just wanted to make things clear. What's written here is that we will approve the plan, but there will nothing that will be done before we approve the budget, right?
Well, yes. Of course, that's, that's the basic idea. So, we're not going ahead with any calls to tender without this being approved. Yes. It's, what's written down there is the following, subject to approval. What I'd like to mention is that we would like, you would like us, you, what I would like you to do is to come up with alternatives for us. Let's not just allude to a $3 million potential debt problem or position, but let's come up with alternatives. Well, we'll be discussing budgetary matters next week, shall we not? I understand, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like you to come up with, I'd like staff members to come up with alternatives. Which, you know, which items should be removed and?
Well, I believe, Mr. Mayor, if, the onus is upon us to deal, along with Mr. Lanard's department staff, departmental staff, to, to deal with those projected changes. I don't think that we should try to influence him. The onus is upon him to determine what's most important. All we're saying is this, Mr. Mayor. We're telling him how much money is available, and he can work off from there. Well, it's, it's your directive basically to allude to a zero debt situation. As town council, if we decide to follow along with your, your proposal to come up with a zero debt solution, well, you know, we'll have to debate that, but the onus is not upon him to, to tackle this issue. If you allow, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Keough had always come up with a spreadsheet in each and every time that we'd ask him add or subtract a certain amount. He entered that immediately in this particular figure, or a figure that we suggested to him into the spreadsheet, and it came up with instant results and functioned quite well. You're in agreement with it, Mr. Lanard? You'd be ready to, to space the projects apart depending on our budgetary priorities? Well, it all depends on, one will be called upon to sit and deliberate, budgetary items, sit down and deliberate budgetary items when town council will have taken a decision that will decide what's what. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, because it does state here it's subject to budget approval. Nothing will be done until then. But if we say that it's not approved, then, you know, well, if there's a project that we don't approve, it will be removed from the list, and that's it. We'll be approving, not he, not, not him. But the onus should not always be upon council members to decide what to do, because we're always looking after our ward's interests. Well, look, this was the plan that was adopted blanketly by council as a whole. Well, in 2018, which projects will be eliminated from the list of potential projects? Well, with the council will. Well, I'm asking that our administrative staff think that. Well, that's why we work together, Mr. Bellenguet, Councilor Bellenguet. That's why we're getting involved in budgetary meetings. So, we'll tell him, get this project, or just eliminate this project out of the projects list. Well, what we're saying, we won't give out this money. We won't allow the disbursement of money for such and such projects. Well, you see, Mr. Bellenguet, if we say that such projects should not go ahead, Mr. Lanard might come forward and say, well, this project should go ahead as opposed to the other one because of priorities. Well, I know that we have 5.6 million dollars worth of projects to complete, but we have no money available for all of these projects to be completed. We have maybe half of that amount. That's why we have budgetary discussions, sir. Councilor Lallonde?
Mr. Mayor, I had occasion to speak to Mr. Lanard, Ms. Collier, and there was a recommendation that was made, given the, within the report, the body of the report, and part of those resolutions have not been adopted tonight. We have to identify those changes so that they may, may be added to the resolution to be properly considered. We'd asked, for example, in the vicinity of Pilon Street, and ramege has already been done, but we'd asked, and Barazo, I believe, we came into play, yes, Mr. Mayor? But the department did not recommend any work there, but Blue Jay, Cardinal. Basically, Mr. Mayor, I would like also to approve what Mr. Lanard had introduced in his report, stating that it did not change the basic purview of the project per se or the basic orientation. Well, that's right. That's why we're entering to budgetary talks next week. But it just, it just changes the balance of the spreadsheet in the next 10 years. But we can vary those documents at any time. We can do so at the next round of budgetary talks. Yes, Mr. Lanard?
Well, for example, everything, all components of individual projects were assessed within, with a view of adhering to the limits of the budgetary envelope that it was, that we were subjected to, or should I say that we were, we have to adhere to? But this was, so that's, when we enter into budgetary talks next week, we'll take a final decision on those. I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, though, however, this being said, to follow up on previous discussions, that we're living within the parameters of the budgetary priorities we've been given. Well, that's right, Mr. Mayor. When we'll be preparing, the mayor will have, be respecting the budget limits that are in turn imposed upon us, and we'll be discussing this at further meetings next week. I presently have this particular thought in mind. Saint Jacques has been persisting since 2016. We've hired the engineering firm to perform the work needed there, but we're not dealing with new construction over the road anymore. We're dealing about, we're dealing with scratch coats, coating right now. We can't work. We can't wait. Well, the document states that the scratch coating surface will last 10 years, but there is a difference. I understand. This was budgeted to the tune of 1.7 plus the $700,000 after that. Well, don't forget that we came up with a seven-mile-year budget to redo other work, but we don't have the money anymore. No, we agreed to, to lay down a scratch coat, but it's not even scheduled to be laid down for next year. You mean the scratch coat? Well, in the 10-year program is slated to be implemented as of 2019 because of those priorities that were assessed by us as a whole, if you wish, in any event. I've, I've noted that with regard to McTeer, there, you'll be performing patch-up work, but I hope you won't forget the plight or the dilemma of the people living there. And Rivette Street refers to a 460-meter length, but we're, Rivette Street, it all was only 79 meters. It's a small, well, there are some streets that are of a very short distance. We don't want to have too much of a heavy laden spreadsheet. Rivette also includes neighboring side streets or small streets. That's why we have a road span that's a bit longer. Julie Street, by the way, does not run up to Heritage. I'm just referring to your plan here. But it's a mistake. Everybody makes mistakes. I do understand that. But definitely, Saint Jacques, you know, when we applied to obtain grant, they told us not to reapply for that grant because we would not get any money. There's a $7 million amount that comes into play here, but we can't go ahead with that amount because it's scheduled for $32,000 and $100,000. Is Saint Jacques in good shape? Not everywhere, because there are certain sections in which we need to replace infrastructures whereby the $6 million amount comes into play. I believe there's a stretch from Marion to Raymond. Well, thank you, to Raymond. There are some structures, infrastructures to be replaced there. As far as the rest of this, the underground area is concerned, the infrastructure is in pretty good shape. Well, when we estimated an addition of $6 million, they were completely changing the, the underground structures or infrastructures. As Dave Darch had mentioned, we should keep what's good and get rid of what's not, instead of changing everything from one end to another. Councilor Grimaud?
No, that's fine, Mr. Mayor. Well, the reason that I mentioned to the 10-year plan is that I believe we should pinpoint those words that need to be worked on with the money we have at hand. But if we perform changes each and every year on everything that we need to do, you know, we say, okay, we want to, for example, there's Pilon Road, this is not worth working on, but it's still going to remain on this particular list. Well, the reason that we're not performing work on Pilon Street is that there are some large agricultural businesses in that vicinity, operating in that vicinity, and if we put up a scratch coating surface there, it will be ruined within a few weeks. But what I'm getting at is that that particular expenditure will remain on our spreadsheet, projected expenditures until 2024 or 2024. When, good chances that you and I will not sit at this council table in 2024 to 2026, if they're relying on this document, Mr. Mayor. You know, you see, why would we come up with a similar document that is called upon to change each and every few years? Well, people should certainly realize that Pilon Street has only a few homes there, mostly surrounded by agricultural land. There's, there's no need to, well, I understand, Mr. Mayor, but we should at least put up as much of an adequate base as possible. If town council is not ready to step up modifications or changes on this particular property, then? Well, those are things that will be discussed at the budgetary talks. All those in favor to implement 10.3 sub B then? Fine. It was approved, Mr. Mayor? Yes, yes, it was. Thank you then. Let's go on now to item 11. Item 11.1, a five-ton truck with plow and salter. I believe this has been modified. Councilor Zant? We're dealing with the five-ton truck matter along with a sploa and salter. That's under the committee and staff reports heading. Well, whereas, whereas tenders for the purchase of a five-ton truck be it, has, has been honored, be it resolved that we turn down the tender that was offered and that this be included in the 2018 potential purchase of equipment. Mr. Lanard, this particular truck will be earmarked, will be assigned to work on narrow roadways, and I believe that's the only similar type truck that we have in our flotilla of 13 trucks. At present, we have a three-ton trunk that performs the necessary work in those particular areas, and from what I understand, the next time that particular truck breaks down, we won't be able to put it back on the road in a timely fashion because it's, it's used up. Now, even go, even though we might go through the budget process in 2018, this, the purchase of a new truck will not be, will not follow through realistically prior to the next fall or next winter. Could we make use of the money that was set aside to purchase this type of truck to purchase a used truck that potentially will offer us a few additional years of service if this vehicle that we have right now, we don't have any backup vehicles to take over unless we resort to private documents, private companies to perform this work? Did you consider this situation? We considered this situation. Of course, it's not easy for a vehicle of this particular nature to perform the necessary work it does, especially when we buy it used. However, the three-ton truck that we make use of at present, we have confirmed that it is still in good shape. There were a few repairs made to the truck, especially this year's, but those were not major repairs, and we anticipate that the vehicle will properly run through this coming winter and is, will need to be replaced next winter. Yes, is that right? Well, what I understood was the repairs made to this truck were quite minor, and we purchased parts that we think might give us trouble this coming winter. parts that we think might give us trouble this coming winter, so if that ever happens, we have spare parts immediately waiting on the shelf to be put into that truck. All those in favor then? Carry. Let's go on now to the next item stemming from committee and staff reports, replacement of Boileau Bridge. Whereas the budget has been set aside for the replacement of Boileau Bridge, be it resolved that we pay for invoices with regards to the surfacing of the abutment and auxiliary works with regard to the Boileau Bridge and in keeping with the first update planned to be implemented. I'm just wondering where this appeared in the budget. In 2016, we had $50,000 earmarked for the repair in Boileau, on Boileau Bridge, but in work in process, 17,000 or 57,500? Where does this appear on the contract? Or $963,000? That was on the budget next year? That was in the budget? Well, the budgetary account that is identified in the report that you have before you, we had a 963,000 total budget set aside to replace this, but, this bridge, but where does it appear? Well, it's item 2-32-40. That's under capital expenditures. Well, this particular code, the 2.4 code, is a capital expenditure code. I understand, I understand. It's just that I could not find it in the budget. Well, I looked for it more than once, and I could not find, come up with it. Fine. Let's go on now to bylaws. Is there a bylaw you'd like to withdraw, Mr. Mayor? I just, I just have a few questions with regard to bylaw 12.4 and 12.5 also, to both of those bylaws. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for either 12, for 12.2 and 12.3, 12.3 also. Might be the same question that my colleague has around the table. Mr. Lallande, would you care to read what's left over then? Be resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. 12.3, 2017-132, to assume Phase B and F, part of the Morris Village subdivision. 12.6, yes, 2017-135, to assume Catherine Street and Chamberlain Street North for public use. 12.7, 2017-136, to appoint members of the Committee of the Adjustment. Bylaw 2017-139, to amend zoning bylaw, 2016-10, Jean-Guy Giroux, for Émile Prudhomme, Joannice et du Golf. 12.10, bylaw 2017-141, to award a one-year extension to an existing contract with Jussel and La Lande Enterprises for the rental of a greater. And 12.11, bylaw 2017-142, to sign a memorandum of understanding with Boyan City, Republic of Korea. And 12.12, bylaw 2017-143, to sign an agreement with Francine and Arinad Pocket for the sale of 3575, De Duys Street, seconded by Councilor Pocket. All those in favor? Carry. Who asked to review item 12.1? Councilor Lallande and myself both asked that this be reviewed. I just, just, just read the summary of the bylaw. Well, the purpose of this particular report is to enter into a lease agreement with TVC 22 and the Town of Clarence and Rockland. Yes, yes. Well, be it resolved that bylaw 2017-144, to enter into a lease agreement with TVC 22 be implemented. Seconded, I'm going to second this item question, Councilor Lallande? My question is this. I'm not certainly in, in opposition to the cost of the rental fees. I'm wondering the following, though. Who will pay for electrical costs, heating costs? The city of Clarence and Rockland will pay for it. Well, the cit, les cités, I'm sorry, les cités, not the city. And we, the Saint-Pascal optimists or Rockland optimists do pay an annual rent, so what we've decided to do is to rent, charge a annual rent to TVC 22, the same as to other organizations, and will pay for heating and electricity. At present, we're paying $1,130 per meeting to TVC 22. Is that for the rebroadcasting or translation? I will not comment. We're talking, we're paying $2,260. TVC 22, is it for the translation? Is it for the fact that they're translating our meeting or for the translating or broadcasting? Because we have to pay $260 a month. That's what I'm wondering. Are they going to abolish the cost that we're going to pay to TVC 22 to rebroadcast our meetings? Well, if we have them not pay for the venue there, they're going to pay $420, but the electricity and the heating costs, well, we've just replaced the furnishes, and it's heated by way of natural gas, so what can I say? I shouldn't speak too quickly. I said that. All right, Mr. Lennar? That's fine. I have nothing else. Councilor Lallande? Is it adopted? All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Bylaw 2017-131, to assume Stage 3 of Morris subdivision. Could someone please second this motion? Councilor Sima? I just have a general question here. Now, when we're dealing with a residential developer, dealing with a phased-in project, does the city of Clarence and Rockland obtain a guarantee on the state of the roadway there? Let's say Phase 3 would be built, Stage 4 is oncoming, let's say, and Stage 5 will be in the future. When we do approve subdivisions, do we obtain a guarantee on subdivisions prior to the work going ahead? Because depending on the developer that, and how he went about constructing his project, we have to bear this in mind, all heavy equipment goes through this work site, and they have to travel onto already existing roadways that are maintained by the city, that are owned by the city. Should we at least ensure that the developer that is called in to proceed to further development be called upon to build a side street that would circumvent his heavy trucks making use of our streets? Well, I'm not aware of any guarantees or, or any different items as per guarantees to be put into an agreement, but when we look at individual projects, we take a look at the traffic flow with regards to different phases, vehicles that will transport water through county roads, for example, to the work site. Some roads are designated for construction purposes, and usually they are directed towards those roads that are earmarked for particular purposes. Is the last, very final layer of asphalt laid down at the very last minute? Yes, at the very, very end, yes. Would they put up a base coating and then the final coating is put in once the final project or this phase, which is considered the final phase of the project, is over and done with? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Lallande has come up with a valid point here. There's Phase 3 and 4 with regard to Sterling here that is not yet over and done with, and the city of Clarence and Rockland would have to ensure that the development of other phases, that those existing streets that are in good shape will not be used because we'll be called upon to pay for transportation for residential purposes. I'm not saying that it's going to be used, but it would be advisable that our department would come up with a list of streets that will be impacted. Usually, whether, I know that Sterling was paved over a certain part of it, I just want to make sure that those vehicles used to complete the Phase 5 of that particular development plan make use of this, these particular roadways. It might be advisable for you, sir, to come up with a list of those roadways that will be used. Let's say, saying there's an access onto Saint-Jacques, for example, that will prevent the heavy trucks to make use of, the city of Clarence and Rockland properly maintains streets, if I might use this term. Well, I understand what you're saying. With regard to damages to existing streets here in Clarence and Rockland, is it caused by the developer? If that is a proven fact, then the developer is held responsible. Yes, but if it's within a phase that we've, we've green-lighted, well, if there's a damage that is caused to a street that we own, the owner will pay for the, for, for, for the damage. Well, how do we turn around and say that it's the developer's fault? Well, because we do have control mechanisms that is now, that are now implemented, ensuring that there are some streets that have been built to ensure that transportation of water be, those activities be carried out safely. So, along Onyx Street, there's another road, Platinum also, that runs by there. Well, traffic will be directed towards those streets. You know, next time that we assume a road, for example, let's come up with alternate plans. Yeah, but so if you're working with a developer, that's not too bad, but in other cases, you might have five, six, or seven developers involved. When you're dealing with 645 units in this particular instance, that's, that's, there's a lot of transportation involved. I want to ensure that on a long-term basis, that we keep this in mind. I understand. All those in favor then? Carry, thank you. Item 12.4, yes, I brought this one up. 2017-133, to regulate the erection of temporary structures. For clarification, for purposes, if you take a look at item 2.2, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to put myself in the shoes of this resident that wishes to put up a temporary shelter, for example. I have difficulty in understanding by reading the standards set out here, and I spoke to Mr. Wilson about this. Mr. Wilson told me that it was not really self-explanatory. It's not easily explained away, you know? We're dealing with the different setbacks, 1.2, 1.20 setbacks. If I want to put up a temporary shelter tomorrow morning, if I want to do so, for example, it'd be very difficult for me to determine, you know, if I would be legal from a setback perspective. The bylaw is really convoluted, very complicated to understand. That's item 2.2. So, Councilor Zant? And then, Miss Sima? No person shall erect a temporary structure closer than 0.5 meter to any interior site lot plan unless the opposite interior site line is 1.2 meter is more. If it's less than 1.2, no person shall erect a temporary storage winter closer to 1 meter to the temporary sideline closest to the temporary structure. Can you tell me, can you tell me, given this directive, how I'll go about putting up a tempo shelter? The bylaw enforcement officer who's called upon to enforce this, sir, you are the spokesperson of your fair department. I don't know if we can come up with something a bit simpler. I believe that the purpose behind, so that a firefighter could go by and have access to the back of the residence. I don't know how we could come up with the words to reflect my way of thinking here to introduce this. Well, can we clear that up a little bit, Mr. Wilson? I know it's clear in your mind, but I'm sure it is. Well, look, it seems to me that he has some good, this councillor has some good wording to clarify this. It's just to allow emergency services to access the backyard. I had to read this particular paragraph a couple of times just to fully understand it. I know it's, I think this bylaw was dated, maybe it was copied and pasted from previous bylaw provisions. Well, we can pass this and we can fix that for, okay. Everyone in favor then? And we'll review it. Fine, thank you. Item 12.4, I'm, I'm still the one, I'm still the guilty party that I brought that up to your attention. Bylaw 2017-134, to amend parking, bylaw 2007-01, in order to allow parking on both sides of Heritage Drive from Sylvain and Raymond Streets to Saint-Jacques Street, seconded by Councilor Zant. Questions? Well, I'm not opposed to people parking along Heritage Boulevard, but I think there should be an assessment performed with regard to the traffic flow there. There's a school built in that vicinity. Well, there's also a daycare center there, Mr. Mayor, and people have to walk great distances in order to pick up their children. If they can park on both sides of the street, at least, you know, if we tell them to park on the west side, then they have to cross the street, you see? And there, there's a slew of mailboxes on the south side, right past the last entrance way situated extremity of our daycare center. I don't see why we should not allow this to be done. Do you want us to result, to vote on this result? I'm calling for a vote. Who's in favor of this resolution as it stands at present? Fine. Carry then. Let's go on now to item 12.9. Oh, I'm the one that brought that to your attention. You have to read this particular bylaw. It would be advisable for you to do so, sir, before we further discuss it. Item 12.9, bylaw 2017-140, to authorize the signature of a contract with Mischeny Construction Incorporated for the construction of a sand storage building, seconded by Councilor Lallande. Councilor Lallande, Lallande, André Lallande. I just wanted to understand that these particular contracts, did we go to tender? Yes, we went to tender. So the budget has been approved, it goes through the tender project, and it has been approved. Mr. Lennar, that was, that was subject to a tender process? Yes. Well, fine. So the contract will also include the two additional feet involved, that the foundation will measure four feet and not two feet as initially intended. That's right. The contract that we're awarding, $91,900, will reflect that change. Yes, that's right, that's right. Change in the size of the foundation. All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Let's go on now to the confirmatory bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw 2017-137, being deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council on the 6th of November, adjournment at 8:25.